Hello and welcome to HAPRA's weekly webinar series. I'm Robert Bailey. I worked at HAPRA and I'm incredibly pleased to introduce our guest that we have today, Stephanie. Stephanie, thank you so much for taking the time to join us.
Thank you for having me. Yeah, I'm really excited to be helping people understand the wonders of HAPRA and how thrilled we are that we have this tool, especially given what's happening around the world around us.
Awesome. So today, for those people who are tuning in, we're going to talk about the story and challenge of building a district-wide course collection with all K-12 core and supplemental courses in only six months. So Stephanie, a little bit of background for the people that are listening, you know, where are you right now? And what's your role?
So I am one of five educators in our Learning Technologies Department here at the Ottawa Catholic School Board in the nation's capital here in Ottawa. My job is to help teachers leverage technology so that they can better serve the diverse needs of their students in their classrooms, as well as we shift to these remote blended learning opportunities, help them get the information they need so that we know how students are mastering these subject matters. So I also am the e-learning lead, so I also help coordinate other types of learning management systems within our board and the province. So I have some insight as to certain learning management systems that are less user-friendly than something like HAPRA, which has been really easy to get people on board from K through 12.
Oh, thank you very much. That's wonderful to hear. So for the people that are listening as well, I really encourage you to feel free to send questions in that you might have for Stephanie. As we kind of go through, I've got a few questions prepared, but it's definitely more of a conversation. So the goal of this webinar is to help kind of give you ideas and inspiration and maybe help hypercharge some of your online course curriculum development that many of you guys are likely doing right now. So now Stephanie, at Ottawa Catholic, you guys started using HAPRA about six years ago. We call you one of our kind of our learning innovative districts. You guys are on the bleeding edge when it comes to technology. So what were some of the challenges that made you go and start looking for solutions?
Well, we knew we wanted to go into Google, that Google Suite was going to offer our students the learning, the technological learning skills that they needed in class, but that they could use as a free program leaving that. So the same sort of tools weren't available to Microsoft back then. And so we went with Google and as a result, we built all these opportunities for our students to learn with docs and slides. But then as we started playing around with that, there was, it was just really cumbersome to make a copy of a document and share it with a group of students and then to collect that back. And then to look at what emails were getting out to the students and which ones weren't. And then who was online and who was doing that appropriately and all of these bits and pieces. So it became really overwhelming for a teacher to try to effectively use the Google Suite without having to use a ton of add-ons and learn all that backend stuff. So when we found HAPRA, we were like, okay, this is going to help solve. So in the early days, it was just Dashboard. And so Dashboard was really helped connect teachers to what the students needed to, and it had all those auto-create files. And teachers were excited and ecstatic because you could actually see what the students were doing and the students had access to those graphic organizers and leading, you know, all those leading questions. And then from there, once Workspace, we were, yeah, we were over the moon. So, yeah. So it really solved the problem that we had. Yeah, sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, what was it about Workspace that hooked you? Because you know, there's a lot of LMS systems out there, some specifically, you know, that were born in Canada. And so what was it about it that just worked and clicked for you?
Again, and it's one of the fights we often have because we have been very, people are like, well, why aren't we using Google Classroom? It sits right in Gmail. It's just all there. And we're like, but HAPRA still does all the things we need it to. And the big one is for us, the dignity of everyone of those students who needs a different, little bit of different reading material or needs different prompts or needs fewer prompts or that in a workspace, I as the teacher can manage all of those needs using the group functions. I can push it all out to my students and the students have no idea that the kid sitting next to them has a different thing. And that's such an important thing in order to maintain that dignity for those students. So we also love all those tools to help teachers manage resources. And we love that it becomes a repository for all those third-party things that we're sending our students to, like Flipgrid, for example, where all of that can be housed in one location. And now with the new upgrades with the images, it's so much easier to navigate students to one place. They don't have to go to their drive and look around and drive. They're going to the one unit that is open in their workspace. And you know, for Kinders and Grade One, that's so essential.
Absolutely. I always find it interesting when people advocate to use Google Classroom because I think Classroom is a phenomenal tool when it comes to, you know, sending out announcements or keeping parents informed or doing class management stuff. But in terms of curriculum delivery, I have a hard time finding, figuring out how people do that within the system.
Absolutely. And we wholeheartedly agree. We think it has some really, really good tools, but for pushing pedagogical and differentiation and for deep learning, because we're also a deep learning board. So to really get kids to collaborate in that way and to facilitate, to help the teacher become the facilitator, not the sage on the stage. We think Workspace works really brilliant like that because you can set up, you know, centers around the room using Workspace as a secondary teacher or a third teacher in the room if you just have yourself, right? So we love that.
Absolutely. Talk to me a little bit about the implementation process. Because as you said, you guys came on really early when it was just Dashboard and it's evolved over time. So what have you done at district level in terms of leadership to kind of help with that implementation?
Yeah, one of about, well, I'm not sure exactly when HAPRA started offering their certification, but it was very quick when our teachers were filling up every cadre of HAPRA certification, where people were just desperate to learn more and to figure out how else they could leverage this tool and to make their classroom more effective. So from that, our school board basically with Blessings from HAPRA started running our own HAPRA certification with our own branding associated to it with stuff that was linked to things that were important in our school board. And from there, we've trained, well, in June, we had a really short little cadre of people. We trained 100 new teachers on using the program. So that's the Google educator, or sorry, the Champion, HAPRA Champion Educator Certification. And we also had another 12 who've got their Scholar Certification. We're going to be running it again in the June, or sorry, September. But over the course of the last four years, we probably trained about 600 people in the basics of HAPRA in this very certified way, which gives people a badge, which they always love a badge on their email, but really giving people the confidence and things that they've been, so if they were always a Dashboard unit, they're like, why haven't I used Workspace? So they're like, oh, actually, these highlight options really give me a chance to have some really unique observations and conversations with students about where they're finding their information and what unique sites they're finding and all those pieces. So as our teachers dive more and more into these different components of the tool, we're finding that we're getting some really innovative ways to engage students. And then so those get kind of put back into our certification and we keep kind of passing them off to more and more teachers because we're finding that teachers are desperate to be able to engage in their students and find different ways to have observations and conversations with their students. They're not always focusing on the product and HAPRA really helps to provide data for those conversations.
That's great. Yeah, I was interested, we've been recently doing a webinar series with students and the number one feedback from the students that we had on was that piece they missed most during COVID has been the just the interaction, the one-on-one interaction with the teacher. They missed the personal side of it. And so for you guys, that's an integral and important piece of the teacher role.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And being able to use Workspace to, and the teacher retaining the ownership in all of those documents that get connected, get copied through Workspace, they become really great tools to give that, Alice Keeler calls it feed-forward. So this idea that I'm giving you feedback as you go, but I'm actually giving you feed-forward so you can take where you're at and improve it before you hand it in for its final version. So, and Workspace makes that seamless, which is again, so essential.
We've got a new grading tool coming out, which I think you guys probably get to play with before everybody else does. But that's a really important piece of the new Workspace grading feature, which is like being able to return it with that formative feedback before the summative stage, you know, before the grades given and that piece, so that kids can learn and grow and adapt.
And again, in this sort of time where I'm not necessarily having a student in front of me five days a week, that I can give that opportunity and give that feed-forward to that student so that they can make meaningful connections. And it's not just like, I wrote this essay and I gave it to you and then you're going to give me feedback and all of a sudden, it's not useful to me anymore because I'm not going to write another essay for you, right? So we're quite excited about that.
Now, when Workspace first came out, it was basically, it was a completely empty shell that everyone, you know, you got to put your own content into. And so you guys did, you guys started at the district level pretty quickly doing content. Talk to me a little bit about how you guys directed the creation of content within Workspace.
Yeah, so we really liked the function of the public feature and we liked that we could create content that was available for teachers, especially around more complicated subjects or something that wasn't as readily available. So again, I'm a history teacher by trade, so you know, it's easy to find World War I and World War II stuff. But if I want to talk about the experience of Black Canadians in the expansion of the West, it's a lot more difficult to find that. So we could then invest in teacher-developed curriculum resources that we could then put on HAPRA using that public component. And what we would do is just have our teachers tag OCSB in it. And so they would have our school board code in it. So all of a sudden, when you go to look in that public form, which is now Discovery, when you go to look in that, you'd be able to see the stuff that was tied directly to the Ontario curriculum that was relevant to our school board. And that was a really great opportunity for our schools to kind of continue to develop and encourage some resistors to at least try it out.
Absolutely. And I think that's such the critical piece too, especially in the COVID world right now, which is we're suddenly asking teachers to become, in a lot of cases, content writers. And that's not where their skillset necessarily started or really what they want to be doing, to be honest.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's a really good way to put it. Yeah. So, yeah, so a lot of those teachers.
Amazing. So.
Yeah, absolutely. And sometimes it's just like, oh, it never occurred to me to teach it that way. Here's this public domain opportunity. I'm like, I'm going to take that, but I'm going to use it this way or that way. And all of a sudden, teachers, because again, I think there's a really amazing teacher, but when you're also doing all of the other things that come along with being in a classroom, you don't have time to look for those new creative solutions. And when somebody, when something just lays out to you and you're like, oh, of course I could do it that way. And then, you know, it sparks all kinds of new creativity and new opportunities for our students to learn. So it's really exciting.
Now, our CEO is Wayne Ponsia and we were just talking about earlier, he's a former assistant superintendent in Alberta. And so one of the questions that he wanted me to ask you, because he's been a follower of Micah Follin's work for a really long time. And I know that you guys use Follin's Six C's extensively. So I'm just curious, how does HAPRA tie into the Six C's and how is it supported OCSB?
Yeah, so we love every time we can talk about deep learning, that we can talk about when we leverage digital, we have the Six C's. It's all contained in HAPRA. So in terms of like collaboration is a no-brainer, right? So being able to press that button in a workspace where a student, where a group of students can collaborate on a single slide deck, that they can then build on each other's work and make it truly better. It's not just cooperation, it's collaboration, because they're like, oh, I'm going to improve how you've written this sentence. Or if we add an image, that's going to make this much clearer. So you can see students either in a face-to-face classroom or in COVID world, working at all their remote stations, really improving on what kids are really, whatever research topic they're doing, or maybe it's a, you know, math problems. So you can see that working really well. And now we love that Jamboard works the same way. So especially for Jamboard with littles, to be able to put that, so the collaboration is there and we're really, really excited about it. We love the communication angle, right? So how do we, so something like the Gmail tab in Dashboard is so vital because then we can also have a conversation about why it's important to check your email when we're in COVID, right? Like, why can't I pick up the phone every time? So why is it important to check email? I can see that you're not checking your email. Or I can see that you're sending a lot of repeated emails to somebody. Maybe we need to have a conversation about why you're doing that and whether it's wanted. So you can, lots of conversation about consent and what communication means and what positive communication is. And then we have that whole idea of creativity. So one of the things we love about Workspace is that opportunity where a kid can just click a button and put in a link. So it doesn't have to be linked to anything that the teacher has already provided. Maybe I went off and I, instead of wanting to do a pamphlet on an endangered species, I've gone and done a wee video and made a really elaborate four-minute video about why we need to save the rainforest instead. And it touches on all the curriculum, but that's not where my teacher asked me to. But I've been really creative and entrepreneurial in how I want to approach this. And now I can give that back to my teacher and no, like, and it's so easy for me to do that. And it's really easy for my teacher to take that from me and to see that that's what I've contributed. So those in general, like, so every C is hit on, but those I think are the ones that HAPRA really helps to give the feedback teachers need in order to apply those to marks and to the final report card.
I love the way that you guys use it in that sense, especially because it gives students so much freedom. And we don't necessarily have a lot of questions coming through, but we have a number of people saying, Stephanie's amazing. I want her in my school system.
Aw, shucks, folks. Give me 12 years, I'll retire and then I'll come out.
One of the things too that we were curious about was, what's the difference between like a lesson plan and a workspace?
Oh, good question. I think it depends on the teacher. So one of the most brilliant, we did a bunch of kind of webinars in the spring and one of our teachers said, I use the fourth column in Workspace to put my teacher resources. So they're in a ghost group, so a group that doesn't have any students associated to it. She's like, so that all of my resources I know that are going to support the lesson that I, there were lessons, the units that I'm teaching with this Workspace are all in the same place. Because for her, she doesn't want to have to go to her drive and find it in there. So she just kind of plunks it into the Workspace. So it's all her resources are in that last column. And then she uses the first three to facilitate the learning for the students. And the beauty of using the fourth column for her own purposes is that the students don't have to see it. So then it allows the bars to be that much wider and sometimes more visually more appropriate for some of the students with, you know, executive functioning issues and that sort of stuff. So, yeah, so you can use it as a lesson plan, for sure. Here's why I'm doing it. But you can also use it as a super simple initiative, like, we're going to talk about it in class and I'm going to have one card, which is going to be the task that I have you to do. And that's the only thing that's there. So is that a unit plan or is that a lesson plan? Sure. And then, but the ideas are all in your head versus, I know I'm going to come back to this Workspace again. So here's the thinking I'm doing as the teacher and here is the stuff that the students are going to be doing.
That's a great way of putting it. It's, I hadn't, actually, I hadn't heard of a teacher using Workspace that way. We call them Workspace hacks because there's, or HAPRA. You know, someone started building escape rooms in Workspace one day and it's like, wow, that's amazing. So absolutely. There's a part two, which I know Stephanie, you're a member of, has an extensive community, which, you know, of educators around the world. And we've got a space where they all come together and thousands of educators talk and, you know, share different ideas and different resources. So the fact that it is as malleable as it is, is, I think, makes it a little bit harder to get into. But for, you know, people like you and OCSB who've been in there a long time, really pushes the limits of what it can do.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I think, I think every teacher comes to it and sees the different value in how it adds to their strategies in classroom. And as they play around with it and realize, oh, actually, all my assessment is in this one place, why would I use anything else? And so, and I think that's during, you know, remote learning in the spring, we had so many teachers go, oh, now I get why this is important and why this is useful to me. And yeah. So it's been really neat to see different teachers go on different journeys with that. And teachers as young as working with Kinders. And I think that's what we really kind of have to continue to remind people. Like, no, no, we know this works with Kinders. It's three clicks. You click onto the portal, you click the Workspace and the kid's off to the races. So it makes such a difference to get our little people kind of using those tech tools in a really appropriate way, right? And because not all screen time is made equal. And HAPRA, I think, really helps us teach parents that not all screen time is made equally. So.
And that's what we've got a lot of, especially down in the US, what we're seeing with some of our Workspace users is that, and especially where, you know, English is a second language at home and that sort of thing. For the K-2, they've been creating Workspaces that are almost more built for the parent. In our, in case down here, Spanish instruction and that sort of thing, that's written for them so that they can then help facilitate that learning.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I think, yeah, so anything we can do to help structure a little person's life in digital learning and to give structure and, because the internet is a scary place. It's full of information and they're drowning in information. But to give them little hacks, as a little Workspace hack, little learning hack, so that they can, they can start sorting out the wisdom in what's online.
Now, as you talked about just a little while ago, OCSB was one of the first districts to hop on board with this whole sharing is caring publicly shared Workspace initiative that we were doing, you know, around COVID. And you guys have been sharing them even long before then. Why did you guys decide to hop on board with that? Why was it important to you? Why did it have legs within your district?
Yeah, because we have so many teachers who are using it, they're always looking for, just like you're always looking for another good teaching resource or another good way to structure the way your classroom is set up. Workspace is like a digital classroom setup. So I never, it never occurred to me to set up my classroom that way. So I'm going to defront my classroom. That's my physical space looked after. And now here's my digital space. Oh, okay. How is that going to look different when I facilitate this lesson? So it was an easy sell to get our teachers to start sharing so that they could collaborate in that way, that you could share across the school to another school in the district so that they could both have an opportunity to benefit from the thinking that they were both doing. And then our teachers are really excited. They want to share what they learn, right? They're, we have a real community here and community means lifting everyone up. And I think it was an easy sell to our teachers. And so, and then even this summer, we've had the opportunity for a bunch of our educators to write some more Workspaces for Ontario curriculum that we don't have current public Workspaces for. So I think we've had 16 or 19 teachers who have been writing some Workspaces. So, and that's been a really interesting, and teachers love that professional development opportunity of how do I write an entire curriculum document into a Workspace to make it vibrant and interesting for my students? So it's a really good professional development challenge too. So we love to learn and we love to share.
And we love working with districts like you. So I think we've got something like 25,000 or 30,000 publicly shared Workspaces now, which is just incredible. And over the summer, we've been working hard to try and align them to the different curriculum standards just to make searching so much easier. You know, before you used to go in and search for like Grade Four fractions or something like that. And now you can do it by standard, which is going to make it a lot easier.
Absolutely, absolutely. And especially with those classes where you're like, oh, I'm really disappointed in how I've taught this in the past and I don't want to do it that way again, but I just don't even know where to start. Oh, I'm going to just look on a public Workspace and see what's there. And all of a sudden, boom, that's the way I want to do it. Yeah.
It's like finding half the work already done. You make a copy of it, you edit it, change it up a little bit and.
Off to the races. Yeah. And some of those Workspaces are just so beautiful. So you're just like, this is so pretty. I want to learn in this Workspace too.
We had, I was talking to someone and they didn't use a Workspace because they were like, well, it's just too pretty. And I wanted to change it, but I couldn't keep it as pretty as it was. It's like, let's just make your own twist on it. So.
Exactly, exactly. So, yeah. And I think that's one of the conversations we have a lot with our, in our professional development opportunities is your Workspace doesn't have to be pretty. It can be functional, just like sometimes a worksheet is not pretty, but it's functional. It's going to get the job done. And then, so now we're just doing hacks about how do we make our Google Docs look different? Because I think it's also shifting the mindset that now you're on digital, you don't have to do black and white everything. You're not photocopying this anymore. You can do everything in color and you can have the kids answer in different colors. And you can have, you know, the font really, really big for your students who may need the visual cues or you may need, you know, or everything goes in tables so that kids just answer in the white part of the tables, right? Like it's, the sky's the limit. It's so exciting. I just, I always love to see what other people are learning with it.
I love that. What do you guys do about, so you guys incorporate a lot of content, say, from outside resources. So now do you grab that? Do you copy it into the Workspace? Do you link out to it? How do you guys manage that from, you know, from a copyright standpoint and all of those different pieces?
Yeah, so I think, so we do have, for example, our, one of our math resources we use in K to A is a copyright resource that has both teacher resources, student resources, parent resources. It has online games, all this sort of stuff. It's a phenomenal resource. But we have to remind teachers that if you want to share those resources, you can't share them publicly. And so we use the co-teacher opportunity to do that because in our board, it's all legit to use. But we really try to underline teachers that if you're, if, what we need to be giving, we need to be teaching our students how to be digital Samaritans. We need to teach how to be good digital citizens by demonstrating what that looks like. So where do you find Creative Commons images? Where, how do you properly source information? Why should you avoid a PDF? And why, especially when you're giving it to students? And why, when you do use a PDF, why does that function differently than a Word document, right? So those are conversations that we need to have as educators and what we share. And definitely conversations that we need to have with our students about academic and workplace honesty, right?
That was one of my learning moments when I was in high school. You know, I took choir and we'd get the binder of all of the music and write on it, it would say, do not photocopy on the photocopy of the music. It was always, oh, we're a school, we teach. You know, it doesn't apply to us.
Yes. No, no, it does. 10% or less, like certainly Canadian copyrights. And certainly there are people who are still on a journey about how to do that effectively. But yeah, what's brilliant is that so many of the tools, again, we're really blessed in our environment that we have some really, really cool tools that our board prioritizes and pays for that allow us to do some really interesting stuff. So a lot of, we're seeing that a lot of our teachers are doing really basic Google Docs or Google Slides and saying, now the sky's the limit of how you want to show what you know. And so we're not, I would argue that we're probably using less and less copyrighted information because teachers are realizing, oh, actually, I can just put the basics and let my kids run. And that's great. So.
And I know one of the things too that we've been working on, we've got a couple of districts in Alberta that are doing it, which is they've got a significant amount of copyright material that they want to put in. So we're, you know, we're creating private Workspace environments for those where, you know, it's housed so that it makes sure that it doesn't get shared out so that there aren't issues with that sort of thing in the, you know, in the future. So.
Yeah. Yeah, we would love something like that too, where we can share things within the board that we know we have control of in our board and then be able to release outside of that. So.
Absolutely. We got a question from the audience, which is great. And they said, I have an inclusion student in my class and they have aides. How do they work on the Workspace? Do they log in as a student? How do you manage that? Do you do it with co-teachers?
So when, okay, so yeah, absolutely. So depending on, so our students are fed into our HAPRA system using our learning manager, sorry, our student information system. So it's, we don't give teachers or schools the right to kind of add teachers in kind of willy-nilly sort of ways. It's all really kind of codified by our system. But if I had a co-teacher, so for example, if Robert and I, we were working with a student and they went from my class in the morning and they were going to work in Robert's in the class, but they were maybe doing this, the same kind of work all day, I could add Robert as a co-teacher and he could be able to tweak what our student is doing. And the other thing is that the teaching aide could also log in with the student and be able to monitor that way, right? And then they could even, any of the student work that the student is pulling from Workspace, that they could also add the teacher aide directly to that work as well. So I know different districts do it differently, but in our area, that's the way we've kind of gotten around it because EA's, our educational assistance, aren't expected to program for students with special needs.
Okay, nice. Yeah. And then that's one of the pieces with Workspace that makes it, you know, the different districts who do it different ways, you know, you can, you can approach it in different situations. Some use, you know, there's a, there's a co-teacher function, bottom-left part of Workspace, where you can quickly and easily just add co-teachers who then can do the student work and really helps with that differentiation and making sure everyone gets a unique experience within the tool.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. We've even used HAPRA in order to support learning of our students in detention, in a youth detention center, where we can use the tools in HAPRA to give them access to Google Read and Write, to give them access to Google, but not to have the internet writ large. So these are students who are struggling with their reading, who need a lot of those digital supports that aren't available if you don't have internet access. But the way that we've made us to make HAPRA work for us, and talk about a giant hack, is we are then able to give those students all of the internet that is appropriate for them to have so they can learn. but cancel out anything else that may cause them harm. So, um, yeah. And so I'm just even thinking about, you know, there's so many cool ways that you can leverage HAPRA to, to help those learners that really need that support.
Yeah, we, we work with countless, um, you know, youth detention centers around, around the US and in Canada, actually, for, for that exact purpose, which is that these are, they're, they're all unique. They all are coming at it from a different place. They all need differentiated learning. And so it's, it's, those are some of my favorite stories that we get is, you know, is, is, is how they're able to, to incorporate internet into the lives of people who, who might otherwise be under, you know, significant restrictions.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's pretty exciting.
That's great. Now does Ottawa, are you guys bilingual? Do you support multiple languages within workspace? And how do you guys do that?
Yeah. So, um, being able to, so we, we have, we have a, an extensive French immersion program here, giving the Ottawa City, City Capitol. So it's, it's our French teachers use it. Um, so they flick the, the, the program into French when they are working with their students. They don't necessarily always need their students to do that. Um, but with our English language learners, so all our ESL population, we love workspaces because you can just click up a button and it translates, right? So the student gets their own copy of the, the, the English version, hits translate, and then they can make sense of the learning that they're doing. So, so we do a lot of French instruction through, um, through HAPRA and we're lucky enough to have a lot of touchscreen Chromebooks. So even our youngest learners using French, they can do a lot of like tracing. They don't have to, they don't have to type. And so, um, and then we can also use HAPRA to use like, um, uh, screen capture tools. And again, connect that into workspace that the students can submit their work again, a couple clicks. And all of a sudden they're able to demonstrate their, their digital, their, their oral ability in their second language, um, to demonstrate for their teachers. So.
I always struggled trying to figure out how to do the Exante goo and that sort of thing when I was, when I was French in Canada on a computer. So I'm, I'm, I'm sure it's easier now for kids that, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They can, and, and again, that's part of all of that, you know, skills, skills for learning, right? And, and it's, if they're gonna, yeah, it's, it's, it's the difference to me between a life skill and I have to train my kid to do this for university. So I, I don't buy into the second, but if I know that if I can effectively use an explore tool in Google Docs, I am set much longer in life and for all parts of my life as opposed to I've got to have it for university, which.
Absolutely. So for, for the people that are watching that haven't necessarily used HAPRA or workspace before, just so you know, when we talk the, about the caring is sharing initiative, um, we're talking about the publicly available workspaces. There's no cost to that. So it's, if you're, if you're, well, I mean, if, if you subscribe to HAPRA, there's the cost of HAPRA. Once, once you're in HAPRA, the publicly shared workspaces are available. So it's not an additional piece or anything like that. So, you know, they, they have access to that. So Stephanie, imagine that, that you were fresh into HAPRA, say you were starting at a new school district who hadn't used it before. Um, you know, it's, it's August, you know, we've got this kind of new weird hybrid situation that we're going into the fall with. What kind of, what suggestions would you have? Any like little pieces that you would recommend, um, based on, you know, your six years of, of, of learning about the tool over time? What are, what are some of the hacks that, that you'd recommend?
Yeah, I think, I think the first and foremost is try one workspace. Try one workspace, not, not a discovery one right away, but one workspace with one card in the third column. So I want my students to, uh, introduce themselves using a slide deck that has all kinds of prompts on it. So I'm going to take that slide deck, I'm going to put it in third column and that's it. That's all I'm going to do. And my students, then it's still, because there's a lot of learning that has to go with the student, right? They need to know how to log into the device. They need to be able to navigate to that workspace. They need to, once they're in that workspace, they need to click on it, be able to understand that's going to open another tab. And then when they're finished, they have to know, they have to go back in and submit. So think about all those steps. So this is like, you need to bring your pencil, you need to put in your pencil case, you need to pick your book out. So like, think about all the things we teach kids to do it on paper. So those same structures have to be in place, um, with our littles. And, and there's, there's always these annoying things like pop-up blockers or, you know, so you have to train kids where to kind of, where to click out and where to allow. So once you have that experience, then you're going to say, oh, actually I know exactly who started and I, I know who I still need to, to work with because they're obviously having trouble. And then at the end, you can see, oh, look at all the success that I had. And I can see who have I, who've I assessed and who hasn't, I haven't assessed. But now I've got one assignment under my belt. Okay, then I'm going to try two assessments or I'm going to try to build out. So I want them to watch this video and then I want them to respond, right? So I think it's, it's about not biting off more than you can chew. But as you're doing that, maybe starting looking at some of those public workspaces, what is available? What is, what is the, the bigger version of that look like? So that when you're ready to start and when your students are ready, because it's not just about you as the educator, it's also about you facilitating, especially little people or, or students who are, are not used to an online environment. How do we, how do we structure their pieces so that they get each component? So they don't come back to, well, I didn't know where to find it. Well, that's where we're going to work through this again, right? And sometimes that's showing them a screencast. So here's where you click. So that's where I would start, I think. Um, and then as you get better at workspace, then you can start playing with dashboard or highlights or any of those other tools that are, um, really transformative in terms of assisting those conversations.
Well, and I think too, that, uh, you know, your, your, a bunch of your students actually participate in some of our student focus groups for student dashboard, which is our, our new tool that, that launched in July. And so I think especially for those school districts out there, maybe who are using classroom for that, you know, for the course announcement type side of things, you know, we're going to slowly bring some teachers into workspace. You know, student dashboard is a great organizer to, to at least get the students on kind of the same page, you know, when they're not sitting there in the classroom.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think, yeah, just to be able, and then be able to, the students be able to go in and, and see what they learned in other components. So it also helps the teacher help organize for the student, right? Because, you know, when you, there's never so anything frustrating when you get the little gaffer with this, the book and it's all just a mess. And you're like, I want to help you learn, but I don't know how to organize your stuff. So workspace helps you organize for those little people who, or big people, because I've had grade 12 students with the same issue and, and help them organize so that they never lose any of the things that are important to continue to have access to.
And that, and that's one of the great things is like, students can never lose work because in dashboard, you know, the teacher can go into the, into their drive and they can find anything. So I know I wouldn't have liked that as a student. I would have been, wouldn't have been able to make excuses about where my work was because the teacher can go and find it.
Exactly. But it's nice to also erase that as an option. Like you either did it or you didn't. And I can see that you didn't. So let's have a conversation, kiddo.
I can see the government in the document for over 12 days. What do you mean? You've, you've been working on it. Yeah, students.
Exactly.
Love HAPRA.
Well, they love it because it holds them accountable and kids really want to be held to a standard, right? And anything less than that is, is doing them a disservice because they are brilliant and hilarious and want, want to want to learn, but sometimes they just need a little coaxing.
Absolutely. Adults still need that, I find too.
Amen.
With the worst students, especially teachers.
Especially teachers.
Now, what about, what about vocational, uh, courses like shop, physical education? Do you put those into workspace?
Yes, we do. We have some really incredible teachers who have really found that those rudimentary skills that they really have like, because kids just want to get to the hands-on stuff. So what they've realized is that if I, if I can take a workspace and do like form quizzes where I'm getting kids to like show a mastery of 80% that they can answer these questions, then I can trust them to use the, the beaters in the kitchen. Or I can trust them to start their welding, um, working with the welding equipment because they've done all their health and safety. And again, I can track that in the workspace. So we have some incredible teachers who have been doing, um, and then also, uh, we're going to be doing Julienne-ing today in our, in our kitchen class. So here's a video on how to do a Julianne. What do you notice? What do you, you know, what do you think? Like, you know, again, capturing those written components for the students to be able to make sure that they're ready to go for the, the hands-off activity.
Oh, that's awesome. Yeah. No, that's great. I, I make sure to tell all the, the districts that, the Catholic school boards that we work with as well, that you guys have some incredible resources, you know, in, in, within your religion curriculum and, and those pieces as well that, that you guys have publicly shared.
Yeah, yeah. So we're really lucky. We get, we have some really innovative, uh, religion teachers who do a lot of social justice. So even if it's not necessarily the religion slate you're looking for, it's the social justice. How do we teach kids, um, about the importance of anti-racism at, in grade two? So we have some, you know, we have people working on that. So, yeah, it's exciting, right?
Incredibly important topics right now.
Absolutely.
That we need to get out there. So it was interesting to, you know, you're talking at the beginning about being a, being a history teacher and wanting to be able to explore other things like, you know, the, you know, the discovery of the West from different, uh, race perspectives and that sort of thing. I think that that stuff is so valuable, especially in today's time as we look at, you know, how we teach history and, and the different perspectives that we do. So those, those are all shared out. We, we actually have a special social justice component to our, uh, our workspace, um, that we're sharing out right now as well. So there's, there's fantastic content there.
Awesome. Yeah, it makes a big difference. It makes a big difference to that. Yeah, to, to be able to access things that you've had trouble accessing, accessing in other places. And if you have trouble accessing as an educator, then I can guarantee you that there's other educators in other places looking for the exact same information in order to engage their students in these really important conversations. So sharing is caring is yet another place where we can do that. So that's really exciting.
Well, and I know one of the things too, is that you, you had to reach out and encourage teachers to share because, you know, a lot of them were shy or they didn't necessarily think that their work would be up to a sharing standard. And so.
Absolutely.
For the people listening, share, you know, everything like there's gems in what you do and, uh, and it's great that other people get access to it. It's, you know, workspace is like that digital filing cabinet now where everyone needs to poke through it.
Yeah. And, and I think the other thing is just to remind students that, or teachers, that when you share, your student data doesn't go out there. Although to remember that if you put student information into the docs that are going to be shared out, you got to be careful about that. But your, your student information and your student product, and even your name, unless you've put it somewhere, doesn't go out into the ether space. So it's, it's really, really private, um, for you to, to be able to do that.
Absolutely. That's a really good point. I forgot to mention that, which is that when you copy a workspace, none of the students carry over with it or anything like that, unless you specifically write about them in a doc or something.
Yeah, exactly.
About, absolutely. Awesome. So what, what, what workspace initiatives do you guys have going into the, into the new year? I heard that you guys had some new policies around using workspace at Ottawa Catholic and.
Yeah. So, um, our, just the spring has shed some light on some very challenging topics. And one of them is just like, parents want to go to one place to figure out what their kids are doing. So, um, the executive decision was made with the cooperation of our union to make HAPRA and specifically workspace, the number one place that K to 12 students will go for their work. So I may use a website as well. I've been maybe using a website, like a separate website my whole life, but now the expectation is that I take that website and I put the link in HAPRA in a workspace so that at least the parents can go there and then find the workspace. I don't have to keep track of all the different workspaces, right? So, um, so it's been a really exciting, so in two weeks, we're going to be doing, um, HAPRA training with every single one of the educators in our, in our, our district, which is about three, 3,500 teachers, if not more. I know there's 4,200 of us, but, um, I know they're not all teachers. So, um, so that's really exciting, right? So we should have lots of workspaces to share in the near future. Um, but, uh, yeah, it's, it's, it also means that from the word go, students start getting used to how do I access this information? So by the time they are, are grownups, which, you know, in my head, they're 14, 15 years old, it's, it's, it's so second nature to them. And really that's when, when things are precarious, that's a really important place to be.
Well, and that's, that's, I think the hard part, especially around COVID and everything, is that there's so much free out there now, right? Like everyone's giving away their education tool. There's, you know, teachers have 70 different apps that they can use, you know, on any given day. And so I know with you guys, you're very careful about kind of what resources you bring in, right? Because it is, there, there can be too much. It can be overwhelming.
Yeah. Yeah. So we're really lucky. We're paring it down to meets, HAPRA and a communication tool that we've been working on for a long time. And so, uh, but again, we're encouraging teachers to use some of these third-party applications that we pay for, but, or that we have access to, but to put them to use workspace as a way to kind of be able to trace who's participating in these little activities in these other tools. And again, once teachers realize, oh, actually this is easier than a hyper doc because I can trace who's clicked on what buttons and I can, um, and we even actually totally unrelated, but similar, in a YouTube video that once you stick it into a workspace, the ads disappear and there's no click to something else. So all of a sudden it's, it's streamlining those for our, for our students.
I didn't actually know that one. That's, that's a great little, that's a great little tip.
It just clicks it. It keeps it together. Yes.
That's great. And that's really nice because YouTube's got a thousand and one ads now these days, it seems like. So.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, you know, it cleans, it cleans it up, which is nice.
And so for those people too, who haven't kind of used workspace before in the past, you can embed videos and images and different multimedia resources. So it, you know, there's, there's a lot that you can do within, within the space.
Yeah, yeah.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much, Stephanie, for joining us today and, and, uh, and the amazing efforts and what you guys are doing, um, at Ottawa Catholic. People around the country and across North America really benefiting from, from the work that you guys have done in the past. And the feedback that you guys always give to the tool because you make it, you make it better. Um, really.
We're very demanding. We want this.
In a, in a good way, you know, it's, you guys train your own team because you train us otherwise, I think, right?
Yeah, I, I'm very blessed to, to follow a long line of very smart people who have been really, uh, given some, some sauce, saw the, the richness of this program and, and invested early. And, and, and I think our system has really benefited from it. So we're really, really lucky.
Absolutely. And I think that the one thing that, that the participants can take away from hearing your guys' story is like, is that, that district-wide leadership is so important, you know, when it comes to initiatives like, you know, using a, a HAPRA tool or something. We, we find that districts who come together and say, okay, this is going to be the initiative and, and, and move together in that direction have the most success with a HAPRA tool. Whereas the ones who come in and say, okay, we'll, we'll make this available and put it out there. That's, that's when you have just too many different floating resources. And, you know, at some point you kind of have to, I think, make that decision to, to move together as a unit.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. And, and, and the, the collective, the collective is easier to move sometimes than those siloed approaches. So when, you know, I find out that my colleague, Robert, is doing some cool things, well, can you share it on workspace? And we'll kind of, and then we'll build and, you know, and it's, it's, it's easy. It's easy facilitating the PD that goes along with that, right? Where it's just learning with your neighbor.
And knowing that change is going to take time. I mean, for us, we, we look at HAPRA implementation at a, kind of on a three-year trajectory. Yes, COVID feeding some of that up. And, but I mean, for you guys, it was six years and, and yet, because, you know, we, we look at, at usage and that sort of thing is, is in the spring. You guys had a big boom in terms of new people coming into the platform and everything because it kind of forced them to be there. Um, so.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. It's, it's exciting. And, and I'm excited that we have this tool that is so user-friendly and so kid-friendly that, um, that we get to, to be able to have more people experiencing what it, what it can do for our students, which is really exciting.
Awesome. Excellent. Well, for all those people listening, thank you for taking the time to tune into our webinar this week. And we've got a few more coming up this, this week. It's, it's our Canadian webinar series week. And so we're, we're talking to educators across Canada about how they're using workspace. Stephanie, thank you for kicking it all off. You guys do incredible work and, uh, and all of the participants are writing in there. Many, many thanks for, for you joining and, uh, and the incredible work that you guys are doing. It's, uh, you guys are a great model to work from or to aspire to in a lot of instances.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you from all of the OCSB for all the hard work you do at HAPRA. And, and we're happy to help and, and reach out. So, um, anything that we can do that can help other people, we're more, more than happy to share what we're doing as well.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Have a great start to the week.
Thank you. You as well.
Bye now.